Welcome everyone to the Hockington School District. This is a public hearing tonight, Thursday, June 3rd, 2021 at 5:15. We're at the Maple Street School. So we are having this public hearing tonight for the purpose of getting public input on the acceptance of unanticipated federal ESER, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief II Funds. So we have a list of the funds and Mr. Chamberlain can speak from here.
Sure, happy to. So thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to have a public hearing. And this very well may be the first in a series of public hearings related to ESER funds. So school districts, when they are available to receive unanticipated funds in full transparency, they want to provide the opportunity to get feedback from the community on the use of these funds. So it's a goal to have as transparent as possible, but also that if there is some committing to funds and with future costs, the community has a chance to weigh in. So tonight, this is the first stage in ESER II. These expenses were implemented in order to basically get back, to continue safe operations, but with an emphasis on April 19th, coming back in and providing a safe environment for our school community. So just a little bit about ESER funds. So the guidelines are to prevent a pandemic, prepare for a pandemic, or to respond to a pandemic. And so like, for example, because of the pandemic, we are going to video stream like we did last year graduation, and that is a response to keep everybody safe. We can't have everybody like to attend the graduation at the Durkin Arena, so we'll have an alternate way to inform the community they can participate, not dissimilar to other schools. I think it was last week or two weeks ago, Mr. Corleze spoke about his intervention. We had a cost on it, Michelle put it in ESER, and that is again to respond to the pandemic, to try to raise any literacy gap. So we have desks to make sure we have social distancing, we have cleaning supplies, we have air purifiers, that's hand sanitizer, that's hydroxide. Outdoor eating picnic tables, I have had a chance to utilize the outdoor picnic tables. I've had lunch a couple of times out there, which is a wonderful thing. And if you drive by the middle high schools, you can see the outdoor tents, outdoors eating areas, and they can use those for education as well. We had to extend the lease on the tents for another week, so that's actually gone up a little bit more. So this is about types of expenses with some specificity. So Michelle through FY can close the books on this fiscal year, and we will be all set there. Just a couple of things about where we are in the progression of federal funds. We have allocated ESER I, that was about forty thousand dollars early in the year. We had a second tranche of money that Michelle was incredibly diligent in utilizing with devices and things like that. So out of ESER II, there is a total of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and we've allocated with the increase of tents about seventy-one thousand. So just under a hundred thousand dollars remain in ESER II. And this doesn't have to be spent by July I, there's no expiration date like that on this. So as the board has talked about, leadership team with Mr. Flynn, Mr. Flynn and the leadership team will take a look at that hundred thousand dollars and work in the next either couple of weeks or after July I to allocate those funds. And again, once those decisions are made, it would be very appropriate to have another public hearing. And then there's ESER III. ESER III was projected for the Hockington School District to be around four hundred thousand dollars on the grant management system, and Michelle and I will pay close attention to our meetings next week. We got about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not sure if that is a readjustment or if that is just the first installment. But as Michelle connects with her colleagues, her peeps, and I do with mine, we'll be watching that carefully because there was an estimate that we provided, and this is less than that estimate. But it may be until, for example, we get our back-to-school plan in place, and they're sure that we're all in and things like that, there might be some conditions to the work that is done. So but for sure, we have one hundred and seventy thousand in grant management system for ESER II, of which tonight we're going to allocate just above seventy thousand dollars. That remains about a hundred thousand, and we have for sure the grant management system allocated already for the Hockington School District, two hundred and fifty thousand. And we'll watch to see if that's an installment or if that is a revised number down from where we were earlier informed of an estimate. So what the public hearing does, it allows opportunity for the public to weigh in at full transparency, and it will allow, Michelle will submit the grant, the money will come in, and that will be all balanced by the time we close the books on this fiscal year. And as you can read these, it is respond, prevent, prepare, and respond, right, Michelle? Those are the three terms. And Michelle and I are in agreement about the appropriateness of the use. And I think Michelle works for the state, just going on every significant purchase, right? So these have been supported by the DOE, and they've approved these as well.
All right, are there any questions?
Well, the ESER II is basically to reconcile everything Michelle's purchased, basically so close to the year out. That makes sense.
You got it.
Real quickly, ESER III, what's that, can we use form in the future, real quick?
Same type of thing. It's to prevent, respond, or prepare. It could be look at learning gaps, it could be looked at other facility projects, as Michelle and I've spoken about, if it's a significant facility project, there are some federal requirements to use the Davis Bacon approach because it's federal money. So all that will go into the mix. Leadership team, probably three or four discussions about these funds. And eagerly, I know they're eager to work with Mr. Flynn and talk about his ideas, their ideas. As the team gets together, we'll make recommendations down the road.
And it's 2022 the expiration on them?
I'm sorry?
2022 is when they expire?
No.
ESER II is 2022, ESER III is 2023.
Yep.
Very cool.
So over a year for the first one?
Perfect.
Over two years for the second one. Are you with me?
Yep.
I'm with you.
Cool beans? Any other questions? This is really good, this is great tonight, thank you for the public hearing. I appreciate the patience, I actually saw the paper. I did see it in the paper, which is always fun, I get to show Jesse this is what we're doing. And so I think we're in good shape.
Great. All right, if there are no more questions, I think we can go ahead and close out this public hearing.
No, just for the record, we have no one here.
Yes, we have.
Nobody here.
If there was anyone here, they would be welcome to public comment, but it's just us.
And I was off, it's September 23rd for the first one, for ESER II, September 24th for ESER III.
So we've got even more time.
Thank you.
Great.
Matt, what do you do, is it pausing the screen?
It's up to you, you want to continue or you just muted it?
There should be, there was a public hearing for ESER I, right? So there's the use of funds out.
We have one for ESER I already.
No, I know, but that's on the site, right, whatever the posting was?
Yeah, we had a post for that, yeah. ESER I's been posted already, we had a public hearing for that one. ESER II, this is everyone, and there's a balance of one hundred and seventy, one hundred thousand left in there. They expire in 2022, which Mr. Flynn will work with. And ESER III is two fifty in there, which expires 2023.
Yep.
Perfect.
Matt, I think we can pause it, and we'll re-communicate in five minutes?
Yep.
Or seven minutes?
All right, so welcome everyone to the Thursday, June 3rd meeting of the Hockington School Board. We have almost a full board tonight. We have Dulce Lopoma, Rob Nato, Norm Gubel, and then we've got Mia Richter and Juliette Shahadi. And I'm Andrea Folsom. Jim O'Brien is out of town, out of pocket, unable to join us tonight. So let's get down to business. So first up, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And, oh, I didn't introduce you guys to... But we're all here. All right, Steve, were there any additions or deletions from the agenda this evening?
There is, so there is an action item related to this speech, the language pathologist position that's been added. And I think we also, in speaking with Michelle, I think we just need to add an action item that the board accepts the federal funds and expends them as discussed at the public hearing.
All right.
And during the meeting, I'll write up some notes, but you'll be fine. But we just have to accept the funds and expend them as recommended at the public hearing, right? Michelle, that'll get it done, so sorry about that.
Oh, no, no problem.
So it's Laura Bailey action item, and then the public hearing following.
All right. And any correspondence?
So there was a couple of correspondence that I've placed in the folder. And I also want to draw attention to two documents from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. One of which is, I put, and the calendar's a little bit off this year, so usually the School Boards Association Resolution meeting is in the spring, but it's going to go in the fall. And so as you review the resolutions, the resolutions are an important document because that guides NHSBA, the School Boards Association advocacy. So if the board wanted to advocate for a position that is different than the resolutions, you would go to make an amendment, and then they would advocate that position. So that's, it's a very unique process, but I just wanted to bring that attention because there are times that people wonder why the School Boards Association advocates a certain way that it does. And it's all based on the general meaning of all school board. You would vote, if you were interested, you would vote and send Norm to the resolution meeting to vote in this way. And so that's one piece. The other piece is, I just highlighted that the School Boards Association is monitoring the ability to have remote meetings that may in fact be time-sensitive if the emergency order runs out. I just want to be aware that the board, and very much appreciatively, has had a couple of additional meetings remotely, perfectly authorized by the emergency order, but that is potentially, that ability is winding down. I just wanted to make sure that was there. So I put those two documents from the School Boards Association in the folder.
Great.
Cool beans?
All right. All right, and so we have, it looks like, four sets of minutes to approve tonight. So do I have a motion for the Hockington School Board to approve the minutes of the additional school board meeting held on May 17th, 2021?
So moved. Second.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ayes, carry on.
Do we have a recommendation for the Hockington School Board to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on May 20th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, carry on. Do we have a recommendation for the Hockington School Board to approve the minutes of the non-public session of the May 20, 2021 school board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have a recommendation for the Hockington School Board to approve the minutes of the additional school board meeting held on May 28th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And with that, we have come to our first public comment moment of the night. As a reminder, public comment can also be submitted up to 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting by sending comments to sbpubliccomment@sa66.org. You will need to include your name and address in the email. So would anyone here like to speak tonight now? All right, we did have one public comment written in to us from Amanda Gilman of West Ridge Circle requesting the information from the public, or the, I'm sorry, the PD Day that the teachers had on Friday with Dr. Dottie Morris from Keene State College. And she wanted that information to be provided to the school board members as well. And we did receive that information and had a chance to look it over, and all looked good. So that's that. Right, so if there's any other public comment, now's your chance.
Perfect time.
Sorry.
Sorry. And you can please just say your name and address, thank you.
Hi, Tricia Lambert, 305 Galveston Hill Road, I'm here to talk about masks again. I'm sure you all knew that. So I just want to bring to your attention, in case you haven't seen it, but Dr. Fauci has thirty-two hundred emails that we're going through that relates to masks, and there's information in there from his own mouth that masks do not work. I hope that people go and look at it. There's also some other interesting information in there. They were playing racketology with our health, and you'll be able to see that as well. And that is with the CDC's Chief Medical Director. These are the people you're following, okay? These are the people you're following, and you're putting masks on our kids' faces. I know you're going to talk about it today, so I'll give you all the opportunity. I know Dr. Chan put out new information. You're simply following. I would still like a metric that masks work. I'm asking that from the board, what's the metric? And is there exact science or any justification? Specific justification from a lab that masks work? I'd like to see it. Nobody's provided it to me yet. So sorry, I kind of got caught off guard right now. But anyway, I'm still looking for that metric, and I would like to know when the masks are going to come off. If we're simply following Dr. Chan, I don't know that that's acceptable because we all have grades, and we can all know that ninety-nine point ninety-six percent of this virus is recoverable. It's recoverable, it's like the flu. Why would we not wear masks for the flu? I won't see someone answer that. But anyway, I really encourage you to go look, there's a lot of nice emails in there, but there's also a lot of very damning announcements. But you're going to see that these people are plagued with our lives, in our children's lives, who are breathing through masks at ninety-two degrees last Wednesday. It's hot today. My daughter on the table right now is seeing two doctors for her face. It's a mask syndrome. I'd like to know where to send the bell, it's your mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hey, Lambert, 305 Galveston Hill Road. Just a blog that's happening around New Hampshire, which you probably know. Keene's lifted their mandate, Manchester's lifted their mandate, Conkers lifted their mandate, National's lifted their mandate, Wyndham School District has lifted it. No more in Wyndham School District because they wear masks at all. There's lawsuits currently against Bedford, there's lawsuits against Hollis and Brooks. So about the masks, indeed unconstitutional. So this is ridiculous. I don't know why we're still perpetuating this. It's just, it's hot, kids can't breathe. Let's wake up, let's look at the facts, let's do our own research, and let's get rid of this illness, okay? We're just perpetuating this thing because we're afraid to admit we're wrong. Let's just put on our big boy pants, admit we're wrong, and let the kids breathe, okay? Thank you.
Oh, great.
So I would argue that there's been following evidence that masks...
I hear, say your name and address.
I'm Shahadi Tewey, Iggy Rollins Road.
Thank you.
And I would argue that there is abundant compelling evidence that masks work. And if you look at the states where COVID is spiking hugely, it's often a place where people aren't wearing masks. I guess from personal experience as a physician, the patients of mine who have been hospitalized with COVID and come down with COVID, when I ask them, it's been in their situation where they are not wearing a mask. In my personal experience, I have not known anyone who was following proper social distancing and masking protocols who has come down with COVID. And so I think for an individual and a collective community standpoint, that masking is appropriate indoors. I think that outdoors is a completely different situation. I think that you have different airflow patterns, and I think that the evidence suggests that outside the risk of transmission is very low. But I think there's a big difference between indoors with questionable ventilation systems versus outdoors. But from my personal experience, anecdotally, masks work.
All right. And with that, we will close public comments.
Could I really quickly say something too?
Yes, this is perfect because it's comments from the board, so Juliette, you get to be the first one.
Sorry, yeah, I'm a kid as well who wears a mask in school, and my sister is in the lower grade, and she does. And it's not that much of a nuisance, it's especially, I think that the small cost, the benefit outweighs that. And just talking with my friends who are high schoolers, who are, you know, seeing lots of people, everybody I know that has gotten COVID has been in large groups of people without a mask. And I think that with people getting vaccinated, sure, in a couple of months, it might be a different story, but especially with little kids where they aren't yet, I think that if you just take off masks, you're going to see a very big spread, the same way you'd see a big spread if before vaccinations, high schoolers got together at a party inside or something like that. And I definitely think that if vaccinations are, you know, more widespread than we have heard immunity, that it's a different story. But as of right now, I think you can find evidence just by asking people around you or, you know, looking at who's gotten COVID. So that's sort of my take on it.
Great, thank you. Are there other comments from the board this evening? Who wants to go first?
I have a real quick comment. Last week, I got an opportunity to go to New London Historical with the fourth graders and talk about these, and had a great time, the kids were awesome. It was really just a super fun day. Last night, my wife came home with some thank you notes from kids, and that was really fun to read this morning while we're coffeeing, so appreciate the fourth graders inviting me and putting up with my E M.
I'll go, I'm ready. You ready, you guys?
Yeah.
So let me start, you know, being on the board, probably the most exciting thing for me is being able to see the award ceremonies for our students. It was just a great experience last week, being able to see the kids from our up to eleventh grade and then the senior level, it was just amazing. And I think this board, you know, should definitely recognize our student reps. They just crushed it that night. I am a little disappointed that both of you did not sit closer to the front. You were like in the way now. It would have made it a little bit easier for walking up, but Juliette, you did amazing with what you received that night. And I just know the success is going to continue to grow in your senior year, and I can't wait to see that. And you're going to crush it. But Mia, I did not know you were valedictorian, and I think that's just absolutely great congratulations. Absolutely. If you need help with a speech, I'm your guy, you know me, I love to talk. No, but, no, no, but seriously, congratulations, it's really great considering what's happened in the last school year. And last thing, you know, it was also great to meet the teachers the other day with their ceremony. Steve did a great job emceeing it. I did lose twenty bucks, Steve, you started to cry at four. There was an over and under, but the Steve farewell tour has started a little bit, and it's just been a great humbling experience. A lot of people have been shown a lot of outpour support, and to be there, to see Steve talk about old memories and sharing reflections, and his community members just thanking him, it's just been a great thing to see. Last thing, I'm keeping this under two minutes. Good luck with the prom this weekend, I hope all our students enjoy it, have fun, be safe. Takes a lot of photos, I always like seeing, this is going to be my first prom, not mine, but my son's, and I'm really, I'm really excited because a lot of these students have something to smile about. Just all be safe and have a great time.
Dulce, did you have anything?
Sure.
Okay. The only thing that I would like to mention is that next, oh my God, I'm going to get emotional about this.
Thursday.
Yeah, next Thursday, there is a hold on Steve Chamberlain's calendar from 3:30 to 6:00 because there will be, oh my God, a community celebration for everything he's done. So that's the Kimmel cabins on Main Street in Hockington, and if everyone can attend, that would be great. Parking at Harold and Martin, overflow at St. Andrews, where refreshments will be provided. Come on, come on.
Awesome.
Yeah, I don't want to miss it. Did you have anything tonight to add?
Not really, thanks, Norm. I might actually take you up on the speech. And I also, I agree with everything that Juliette said, so we'll be able to.
Great. Now you did come to me, I have two things. So first, I also got to go to the award ceremonies for Juliette and for Mia, and it was wonderful. I think that this has been an extraordinary year. This has probably been the hardest board to serve on. You guys have gotten some life lessons, I'm trying to like make eye contact so I can bear with you. You guys have... You guys have gotten some life lessons that I think you didn't know that you were going to get. So I really want to commend you both on showing up to so many meetings. We had more than ever before. To being so respectful and open to listening when it was really hard to listen, and for being brave enough to give your opinion. I think that that is difficult for many adults to do. And so for you to do that as high school students is a real testament to your, to your character. So you both should be very, very proud of the work that you've done this year, so. And then the only other thing I wanted to just make mention of is, it is June, so June is the beginning of Pride Month, which is a month dedicated to uplifting LGBTQ voices, a celebration of LGBTQ culture, and the support of LGBTQ rights. And I think I just wanted to bring this to light just because we have a couple of policies that aim to create and affirming, an inclusive environment. I think that it's something that as a district, we continue to work on. But I just did want to make that, kind of bring light to that because I think it's really important, and it's something that impacts a lot of our youth and our families and our community members. So happy Pride Month. All right, so we are on to presentations and staff reports.
Sure, I'll have me just introduce it. So this is our, we planned, start with Chris, and then all the way through, and now we have Matt, Mandy, Michelle, and my report. And this will conclude the end of the year summary reports by all the members of the leadership team. And then we'll have one more meeting in a little bit. So I extended my appreciation to the leadership team members for their thoughtfulness on the reports today at our meeting, and we'll just start off with Matt, Director of Technology. Matt, thank you for your submission, and if there are any questions or if there are any highlights. But I just really appreciate all that you've done.
Actually, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated Andrea and Jim's words at the ceremony yesterday. I think I found it tremendously difficult to reflect on this year. I think I haven't had a sort of real conclusion about it yet. I don't think I quite found it set in place in reflecting on this year. But I certainly, I think the watch of it this year was flexibility because we all had to have it from parents to students, board members to administrators and certain teachers. So I just really wanted to appreciate all of their flexibility. Certainly hope to help support them as best we can. I would take your questions.
Any questions about masks?
Just to have a quick comment about, you know, we talked about the one-on-one, which I think is fantastic. And like, you know, going forward, everything that you're doing to make sure that kids are accountable for their Chromebook that they got, and we're going to sustain this. That's going to be the key piece. You know, that people are recognizing the significance of that, and we're holding kids accountable, and they're taking responsibility. So thanks for making that part of the plan.
Yes.
A big part of the plan. Thank you.
And certainly the watchword of responsibility and care, while also giving and providing services.
Thank you, Matt.
Any other questions? I just want to appreciate all the work that you do in the summer. I often forget that you guys do all the things in the summer and update everything. I think this year, we really saw how important technology is. And thank you for your flexibility as well because you guys had to do a lot of changing on the fly and dealing with frustrated people, and computers didn't come in the box. So thank you.
Interesting set of talent, but I think we could all say that about the last meeting.
Can I ask you more questions?
One is around, so I'm guessing you're tracking this, but over the course of the next year, since we purchased so many Chromebooks, can you just keep an eye on, like, depreciation is not the right word, but like the retirement rate, I guess basically it'll be interesting to see, like, if we have a five-year or seven-year depreciation, what that actually looks like over the actual usage of kids responsibly using Chromebooks.
It's actually been surprisingly good so far. I was quite concerned when we set home Chromebooks last March because it was just not so easily based on need. And I was expecting perhaps, you know, by the middle of this year, that we might have 10% losses. But I think it's more around 3% or 4%. So definitely give the raise where we expect. So yeah, we'll certainly try and make sure that we're keeping correct.
Did we implement the buyback option, or is that not in the cards yet? And that will be Rob talked about it.
We haven't. That it wasn't part of this rollout, it was-
Maybe in the future?
Maybe.
Okay, cool.
And then my only other comment, which is not actual like hardware technology, but in terms of like traffic to the site, do you have any like anecdotal numbers about traffic or usage of materials on the hopkintonschools.org site or?
I haven't looked at it a while. I'm pretty sure we do have analytics running on it. So I can definitely take a look and see where we are and how that changes over time.
Yeah, it's interesting that there are people are going and, you know, that was like, well, thank you, Matt.
Thank you. All right.
Up next, and what a pleasure because it's not often we're in person. I have, one of the highlights for me this year in the positive is working with Mandy. Incredibly collaborative, insightful, caring. Mandy, I just appreciate the opportunity. I'm glad you're here in person, and it's a privilege to work with you. Just thank you for your contribution. It's not the easiest onboarding through a pandemic, but I think, I think really she really has connected to the meaning of our schools. So Mandy, thank you. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I think I seem to be difficult to hear you say this, and for other people too. You're going to move and change this during a pandemic because it's a great place to land. The team has been fantastic, and I think you'll see in the accomplishments that I wrote, a lot of the stuff that I'm doing is really just applauding what's already here. I didn't create people that were good collaborators or anything like that. Those are already here, and I'm so thankful for them because without it, it would have been even more interesting, I think. And I'm so grateful for the team that I get to work with each day. And we are, we're just really working on beefing up, for lack of a better phrase, the foundation that's already here. So from that foundation, we can continue to build up and bring new things in and check things. And really, for me, it's going to be about this continuity across schools. So each school is doing the same thing with the same paperwork, with the details and between those frameworks being different because they have to be of different populations. And just really working on that, that's something that we're excited about. We already started that work in a couple of different areas. So really, we're looking at the RTI frameworks, the 504, the IEP, all those things. And we have a great group of staff coming in, diverse group of staff, it's not just special education staff. You know, the counselors are coming in, the reading specialists are coming in. It's wonderful. And their input is just phenomenal because there's some pieces that I don't know about. I don't know, I don't know all the ins and outs of RTIs. It's not my bag to hold all the time. But it's important that I really understand it deeply so we can just continue to build on it. And because at the end of the day, you know, there is that impact on the special ed side of things as well. So it's really just been a fantastic year to just get to know Hopkinton and get to know the people within it. I think I said to my husband just a couple of months ago, I was like, you know, it finally feels like it's my position. And that to me was just like this, those relationships that I wanted to build. I probably would have built them a lot faster if it wasn't COVID year. But it just, it just felt so, felt good to get there and be able to recognize that. And I'm just excited to be able to see where it's going to go from here, so.
Great. Any questions, comments? Go for it.
Hi. So this is awesome, Mandy. I thought that your note was incredibly informative and beneficial. And the defining frameworks piece is just seems like a huge behemoth of work. So as you think about the changes with RTI, 504s, IEPs, and then sort of like the, like, termination ranges, how do you think about the timeline for all of that, or what does that process look like as you think about the next year or two years, three years?
Well, first, we're going to focus on RTI, simply because 504 and IEPs bring with them frameworks just from federal and state regulations. So there's a lot of that already built into those. So it's just maintaining that and understanding that a little bit better. I don't, I don't want to say it's not a lot of work. It is a lot of work. But I think over the next year especially, we'll really be able to get some things together. So we're all using the same, like I was saying here, the same cutoff point. So what are those points that we're going to use and what information are we going to use to make that decision? And then how do we determine what the length of intervention and things like that? Some of those may vary simply because, you know, a kindergartner may need more time. Or, you know, or depending on what the gap is or what the intervention needs to be. But really just talking about, I feel like if we can nail those things, the details within that just come. So I don't want to say the work becomes easier. It's never easier, but I think it's easier than it's defined. And I think that's the piece that I was missing coming in, is it wasn't clearly defined to me. Because I went to one building, it was, it was one way, and another building was fairly similar, but there were shifts that I didn't know about until I knew about it. And it's more about just defining them and communicating them out. And I think over the course of this year, we'll really be able to iron out a lot of those things. We're already starting to make some of the shifts for the 504 plans. And 504 versus IEP, we're not taking kids off IEPs. I just want to make sure that, like, when we're having conversations and they're only receiving accommodations or related services, that's a 504 plan. And that's okay. And let's, let's just talk about those things and then define them, and then clearly define them. And it's not about changing anything. We're not changing anything. It's just defining them more clearly and then using them to make a family.
Awesome. That was it. Thank you, Mandy.
I think for me, one of the greatest things in your thing was when you talked about the risks of suicide screenings and how you have a group of people who are, I'm sorry, I'm not used to this. So for me, for your report, I was really happy to see that you had discussed about the procedure of the suicide screeners and how you have a group of people who are talking, and you're making it all across the community, parents, teachers, and just really, especially during a time like right now, it's so important with the mental health of all students. I was just really happy to hear that it's an ongoing conversation, continuing to monitor it, and having that open dialogue with parents especially is something that's very important. I just wanted to say it was really great to hear that, and I just continue that. Hope that continues moving forward nonstop because mental health is a very serious concern for all. Thank you so much.
Dolce stole all my thunder. Thank you so much, Mandy. You've done a wonderful job.
I'm glad to be in person. This is my very first board meeting in person.
Yeah, because we met Mandy like in July, I don't know, August.
At the groundbreaking, yeah, but nobody knew it was me. Because I don't see you on computers.
Over soon. It's all right. Norm stole all my thunder, so.
Sorry.
It was an entire Zoom-based process.
It was.
All the interviews was all from the board that were there.
Yes, because I think our first phone call while I was on vacation was over the phone, with the intent that it would be in person, and then I would be shut down every week.
And our third out of four tonight, Michelle does regular reports every month, and she has a supplemental. But I really appreciate she put some reflections in just about where she is in the global among everything else. So Michelle, thank you very much for submitting your reflections. Turn it over to you.
Yeah, sure. Well, you know, I'm just short, sweet, to the point. That's, that's what I try to do. And I guess it's probably because I try to be as efficient as possible as I can in my job. So it is a little different of a format than the others, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I just want to say thank you. Honestly, I mean, we meet every week. We do, you know, for the Build a Project. And Michelle has been so busy in this project and along with other things she does for the school district. I just, a huge thank you for being on the penny on everything and making the project successful. Without you and Steve, we wouldn't be where we are, where we are with the transparent communication to this community on how we're doing. It's just, it's really great to work with you. Thank you.
No? Dolce?
No, I mean, I think the biggest thing will be that I would hope that what you said about as time goes on, that there is more clarity about the federal grants and that it will take up less time. Because I know that there's a lot of uncertainty as these programs get implemented. And so thanks for constantly talking to state administrators so that you can get the questions answered. I think it's a lot, and we appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah, I would have the same, a similar remark. You know, your job is already a full-time job, and then adding on huge federal grants is no joke, especially with all that they require. So, thank you, Michelle. All right. You?
Sure, the last, the last report, I just provided a little bit historical context. So this was Larry Johnny, who asked for this form. Before it was general, really, you know, as a principle, I would just provide information. But Larry really wanted to know what were the concerns were, you know, what the worries were, and what were the current work. I really liked that format. I like doing board reports. It provides me an opportunity to reflect. This time, a little bit longer than the current year is a little bit of work in my 12 years as soup. But it really was a pleasure to spend some time reflecting over the long weekend and try and discern, you know, what were the three, three and three with a little bit of runners-up as work. But I appreciated the opportunity and certainly answer any questions.
All right, questions, comments?
We're looking at you, Dolce. We keep saying down the air. No, I mean, I think that I would just support, I think that you have a team, like you said, that works extraordinarily hard and is very dedicated to this district and to the students. And as we have seen from Mandy's report, the people are sort of looking forward to a break this summer. Having people be able to take the time they need to recharge and to establish a good work-life balance is really important. So I think that's important for calling out. And yeah, that's really it. I think it's great.
I thought you did a nice job, Steve, of portraying things as they are and how they might be. So, you know, you've seen a lot of different positions here in the school district. So all of that culminates to getting a nice sense of what's going on. I think we may have had that conversation 12 and a half years ago. So thank you very much.
My honor. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Can I say one more thing? The last thing is that it's like also, I feel like classically, Steve, that you included runners-up for everything. Which I think is amazing because it's also things to keep an eye on for all of us as we think about the next year and beyond. So I appreciate the reflection there.
Sure. And a little bit of historical record, a little bit of stuff. And, you know, there's, I'll be honest, there's some stuff I've been extraordinarily proud of. The social justice work, restorative justice work, the mindfulness work and stuff. You know, I'll be honest, there's some stuff I look back on, wow, we did some, you know, last 18 months has been so difficult that even leadership team today says, you know, we did some good stuff, you know? The last 18 months has been so hard. But, you know, if you take a look at the entire body of work of the leadership team together, there's some, there's some really cool stuff. Like Rob, you remember Art for the Sky?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's some, we just did some cool stuff. We talked about Art for the Sky today as a leadership team. Yeah, and we did, you know, and it just a lot. So thank you. Appreciate the opportunity very much.
So I'm reading the report. I had no questions. And then I got to the end where you said, "Take good care." I didn't like that. Because to me, it was like, where's it going? And it sunk in. But to me, it's still like, we still had it a month ago.
We do.
But I didn't like the "take good care." Because it was something I wasn't used to, and it's something that was, it was a great report.
No, and I truly, I truly hope that you and this community takes good care.
It just, it was, it struck me in the heart of care, and it was great.
I need to end with me. Well, I thought it was a really great kind of retrospective on things that have gone well. It was really neat to see kind of what you were talking about, some really good stuff that we've done over the years. And we've gotten the chance to work together, only in the most difficult way.
It was like 10 years' worth of work.
But I also think that some of the things that we will all keep an eye on, such as school funding and the work-life balance, I mean, this year has just burned people. It's been hard for everyone. And then just general support for public education. Because I agree, I would not have come onto a public school board if I did not believe deep in public school education. And I just, I think that you were right on with that. And I think that it is our responsibility to continue to uphold a whole public education because it is truly for the public. So, thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, I have to go back to my agenda. Yeah?
So up next, I have some more discussion. And I think I explained my report that it hopes the operating room doesn't exist. But just where we are, updating the cases of the school. As of my discussion with the nurses at Harold's School, we had no students or staff impacted. We have one student at Maple Street School who is in quarantine, human exposure. And at the middle of high schools, no staff or student impacted. That's where we are. So one student throughout the district right now. And so I'm going to turn it over to Andrea real quick, but we, we were spending, we spent some time taking a look at masks for outdoors. So at Maple Street and the high school where we felt, the middle high school, we felt very confident in the social distancing that went outside of masks. But we had talked about a couple of times at this meeting and working with the nurses that at the time, that because of the littles, it was very difficult with social distancing, the staff, nurses, the staff, who felt that continued mask wearing was important. Bill, D, our number five bill, that Dr. Chan changed the guidance. And so thank you again. I'll have to give the turn over to Andrea, but Andrea worked through. Our process will really be at the MOA, and Bill started the implementation strategy to try and support parent choice, but try and make a revision in the MOA. So Andrea, thank you for your immediate attention to this. It's important for the community.
Yeah, so as basically as Steve stated, really to find out that Dr. Chan changed the recommendation, saying that basically outdoors, I guess it's not indoors, but for outdoors for children, that they can be mask-free. I was able to be in contact with- I was able to be in contact with both leadership from the HDA and from past our two unions and was able to give this information to them as well as letting them know that, as Steve mentioned, the nurse supported it. And then we had union reps basically in the schools also supporting this change. The only change in the MOA will end up being, we're going to be going from we are requiring masks when outdoors to recommending masks when outdoors. The biggest issue, so this has not really been an issue at our middle high school or at Maple Street School, because the kids are old enough and they've been able to keep physically distanced when they are mask-free. However, at Harold Martin School, we understand they are small children. They will probably not be able to remain physically distanced at all times. However, sort of looking at the risk and looking at the current recommendations, everyone knows in agreement that they were coming. But with, you know, two, a little over two weeks of school left to go and warmer weather, I think that this will be a welcome reprieve for kids.
Yep.
Bill is working on just when the kids have a mask, what they do with it. Is it a baggie? Is it a pocket? And also making sure that if parents, for the real littles, we want, if the parents would prefer that the youngster continue with a mask at recess, we will certainly support that. We'll make them. So Bill's collecting that information as well as how we manage the mask for the littles. But for, I believe, starting tomorrow, people outside, they would likely be without a mask on in our school.
And I should also mention that the classes, I did receive confirmation that classes remain cohorted even when outside for recess. So we do not have classes mixing for lunch or recess, so that that cohorting is still happening. Good? Great.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
And the last piece I'll refer to, it was a late addition to the package. It was the decision-making matrix. And we're at 4.6 cases per, well, seven-day average per 100,000, which puts us at just community spread between 1 and 9, which is yellow. It's the lowest it's been in a long time. That was also one of the reasons why the nurses felt so strongly, community spread was so low, that they felt it was a good solution overall. So that's where we are. Now, one of the, as you look at the decision-making matrix, there is a line there about what about if we have high temps? And so the leadership team has spent some time today just taking a look at, you know, we do have some, you know, looking at early next week, some high temps. So a couple of the strategies, we're looking at increasing airflow 24 hours a day to schools to make sure that we can start the day as cool as possible. We are availing ourselves of all cool spaces if there's, you know, too big a move, classes as much as possible. We also have four outdoor areas that we developed through what we just talked about, the ESR funds of the public hearing. That's a little bit difficult because we have kids remote and going outside is always as seamless. But we can move to the library, maybe the auditorium, it's open. And we also, Chris and Rebecca, if families, you know, if there's kids that are very, very susceptible to heat, they could, they could stay remote. Right? There is synchronous learning going on, so apparently if they make the choice that, you know, fourth floor, you know, even if they wanted to get dismissed at lunch, go home, maybe the last few classes when it's too hot, that's easily implementable because we are synchronous. I don't know if I made, does that make sense?
Yep.
So it's increased airflow, it is moving when possible, offering the remote option to families who think, you know, they're very concerned. And move to spaces, move to spaces inside or outside as much as possible.
Yep.
That's our strategies for the year.
Great.
Okay?
All right. All right. I think that's everything. So next, we have an update from the Capital Improvement Plan Committee.
All right.
It's La Poma. Turning it over to you.
It's one of the most exciting committees. It's not the most exciting committee. So just so everyone knows, our capital improvement plan on town warrants, our school warrants is called the Maintenance Trust. But it's the same, it's the same thing, just so everyone knows that. Rob and I have the good fortune of being on both the CIP and the Financial Committee, which I think means that as we're thinking about both our short-term priorities and our long-term priorities, we can think about these things happening in tandem, which is great. And just so everyone knows, the CIP involves a long-term planning and visibility into our buildings and our maintenance. There's a document online that I think everyone can access that provides a ton of information about each of our buildings. Like I think a 10-year forecast of the maintenance that is expected and that we can forecast and what the projected cost is and that, what that amounts to and sort of what we need to be able to support that if we're looking at it coming out of a trust account. One of the things we talked about was really about getting up to parity. So this year, we are contributing 150K coming out of the school meeting. After our expenditures, we'll be down to 116K. It is worth noting that based off of recommendations, that if we were really living up to our recommended capital renewal plan, we would be somewhere, making contributions of somewhere between 700K and 950K a year. So obviously, New Hampshire is in a different bucket, which is something that we talked about. We don't get a lot of contribution from the state. It is very hard for any town in New Hampshire to finance that level of contribution. And so what we really talked about was trying to figure out, how can we make the right level of contributions that get us to a point where we can be doing proactive planning around our buildings? This will be a long process going into the fall budget planning cycle. The last thing that I think we talked about was I live my life in spreadsheets for the most part, so I'll be doing a little bit of work to supplement Michelle hopefully, just to do a little bit for the layman visibility into it. So I think it was a great start and, yeah, thrilled.
Excellent.
Awesome.
The only thing that I, thank you Dulce. We moved from a 3% to a 2% because of all the work in the last five years.
Yep.
As estimated, so the number that Dulce used was actually down from where it was before the performance contract and before all the facility projects. So I think that's great accomplishment. And a little thing, but I have to do it with Norm's ear. On the CIP now is a roof map of the legend.
Yes. Yes, you said it.
You know, when it was, when it was last redone, when is it projected, we redone as a link. So I had to do it, Norm.
Oh, I'm happy. I, I got it.
So there's just, where, you know, where Michelle and Noah have taken this to where we are now, it's been a great journey and I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yep.
Any questions, Dulce?
I'm excited for the work you guys are gonna do. Really, the CIP is an amazing thing to do.
All right. Thank you. Next, I have the Capital and Finance Committee.
Okay. So I'm gonna go over some numbers. Try to make this all. So essentially, we were talking about the fund balance as expected and where those resources are gonna go, both designated and undesignated. So I'm just gonna walk through the math. So right now, the production is 1,012,000 in fund balance, or if you like to term it, operating surplus. And for people who are curious, you know, how did that come about? When the audit is done, that information is in the audit down to the dime where these funds came from. So I think last year, you know, when you look through that, page 70 comes to mind. But there is a page on the audit that you can see where fund balances derive from. So in last year's budget process to get us where we needed to go and understanding where we were at, we designated $542,000 to offset taxes. That was in the budget. And then we designated another $125,000 towards two warrant articles. One was the Maintenance Trust, which goes predominantly towards capital improvements for 100,000. And then another 25,000 to go into the Technology Trust so that we were building that pool of funds to replace those Chromebooks that are now in the 1:1 ratio. So if my math is correct, you subtract those two things from our original 1,012,000 number and you're at 340,000. And that becomes the undesignated fund balance. So we have some choices as to what we can do with that money. Now, the first thing that we thought was really important was to refill Article 10. And essentially, what Article 10 is, something that was created by the Hopkins School Board and District a number of years ago to be used for tax reduction. But in its latest iteration, it can also be used for an emergency use. And that, the law, the thing that we passed was that you could use up to 5% of budget. So to tap on our Article 10, if it was completely filled, it would be $788,000. If we backfill the 250 that we pick out this year, then it would be up to 394,000. That leaves us with now an undesigned balance of $90,000. And then we talked about things that need to get done pretty much right away. So that list includes the e-finance software programming for the business department, the fence that no longer exists here at Maple Street School, needs to be replaced, as well as the fence on the other side, and that's $6,000. Furnishings in parts of the building project for $25,000. So just a little bit there. So when some of the additions were made, the forecast for the cost of the addition was complete, but not necessarily complete to the furnishings. So we can have this great space and then not fill it. So this money would be used to fill that space and keep us on budget in the building project itself. Related to that is the old engineering room at the high school will be becoming a physics engineering lab. And those are desktops that are, Matt knows better than I, but they're a little bit dated and they are really designed for project lead the way. So to fill that lab with laptops, I'm assuming, that work both for physics so that they can be mobile and for project lead the way is the goal of, you know, that would be $40,000. So that, that's 80,000, 83,000 in the undesigned 90, which leaves us with about $7,000 to talk about for smaller items. As we move forward at our next board meeting, we'll get more refined and then final decisions will be made just before the 30th by the board in terms of how the money will be spent. And that number is likely to change. As POs get closed out, Michelle has a better understanding of exactly where we are. So we may have more options moving forward. And I think that, you know, one of the recommendations that we talked about as a group was that beyond this 90,000 now, any additional money beyond that really should be going into automatics. So the undesigned fund, well, the designated fund balance at 542,000, get pretty hot. So it's gonna be hard to meet that year over year. So if we can bring that number down by taking some money out of Article 10 moving forward, that puts us in a better position when we're trying to budget next year. So that's what we're talking about. We'll have a more detailed numbers in front of you for next time as we get some harder numbers coming in. Questions?
Adam, you miss me? No, this is great. You were like right on cue. I'm doing the countdown here and auditing you literally, like on your numbers. You did a really good job. I can do math, man. Yeah.
I can do math.
I, I do. You're great.
Rob, you did, you know, perfect summary. Look forward to working with Michelle over the next week and a half to the 15th. And I have a recommendation also checking in with, absolutely checking in with Mike and doing all that stuff. So I think we'll be in great shape for the 15th. So thank you. Michelle, all of this back-to-back meetings, and I think they're already up. I do, I think the sound is already up and people want to listen to those meetings.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Excellent. All right. And we are on to the Hopkins Building Committee.
Awesome. So before I begin, we had a meeting this Tuesday and it was a great meeting. We had an opportunity to reflect a little bit on Steve's work on the building project. We missed out on some cake, Rob. It was absolutely delicious. We all, we all had some cake. We sat around, we talked about, you know, what drove this project. Steve's coming to the district and it was a great time to reflect. And it was supposed to be a half an hour meeting. Steve made it 45 minutes. So it was, he was really passionate about what he did and it really was a great moment. But probably the most important thing that we talked about at the meeting was the FFE that we discussed a lot. Michelle has issued POs for $16,259.68 over, over the budget for FFE. So that's really important, reflecting what you said, Rob.
Do you tell people what FFE means?
Yes. Furniture, fixtures and equipment. So that would move owner's contingency down to 27,000 going into the major part of the project, the science lab. As Rob spoke, moving 25,000 from the fund balance into FFE would give us some breathing room on the owner's contingency. Additional priorities, of course, is Harold Martin's Library, flooring, and most important to me, is expanded parking. We are looking at more efficient parking as well. One thing that's important for us to understand is that we do have available funds for this project to look at these additional avenues as discussed. Construction contingency, interest for the town voted yes on, which is great. Rebeat on energy savings, the fund balance, more may be available prior to July 1st, and the Maintenance Trust. I, I'm happy to hear, you know, a side comment and appreciation to the recommendation for the Finance Committee on helping with the 25,000 for the FFE. You know, you were right, Rob. When we did these adults for these projects, it wasn't necessarily calculated at the empty space for the school district. It just wasn't there. So we, this was a time for the, the time for us to buy this stuff because of the way it was bidded out at a lower cost for this district. If it's later, it's gonna be more. I do optimistically hope that this board can commit to that parking over at Harold Martin. I think that's very important that we find that. And I'm hoping we do get that in the part of the number of resources that I mentioned, but also flooring at the library. I think that's something that's very important to happen. But we had a good, robust discussion about that. But definitely keep my eyes on those other opportunities. I'm excited to see what happens on July 15th. We receive owner's contingency back from construction. So July 15th, we'll have a number and we can discuss. And I think Michelle's, you're doing a little bit of work of kind of for parking, getting, not quotes, but more, is it quotes you're getting?
Well, for the, so there's two approaches to parking. One is just by more efficient use of space.
Yep.
Relining and removing of a tree in a little bit. We think we can get about 17 spaces there. We think that's, could be around a $5,000 hit for 17 spaces, which is a great bargain. So that's being priced out right now. And also, we are, we have in a cost towards expansion, which would be, you know, taking, you know, some more space of about 17 spaces. So I agree with you, Norm, parking, I've seen it on too many of those wonderful parent events.
Yeah.
Parking, it goes all the way out and it's not as safe. So we have some work to do there, but I think there's some opportunity. And I think the construction contingency will be released mid-July and that's hopefully there's enough there for some parking, I mean, some carpits, some parking things. I think we're in good shape.
And the last thing is, I always say this, we are on time and we are still on budget. So that's the most important thing to say. Consider we're in a pandemic, you know, we are still on budget and on time. That's it.
Great. Any questions for Norm?
No. It's exciting.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. School board business, schedule.
So we're winding down. Right now, we have one, one school board meeting scheduled left, which we'll do, we'll look at fund balance. We'll have more personnel, talk to leadership team about doing a significant review of Schedule B. I want to make sure those are all nominated before the last meeting. But I also would like the board to start thinking about the summer schedule. So this is the time where we start and the different approaches that boards have taken. So some were simply called as needed. You know, when there's a hiring that need to be done, the superintendent would reach out to the board and say, can you meet? And post it, but meeting. And then some, like last summer, as we remember, we met and we meet. So that's another option. And the other is a regular schedule option, you know, where you go first and third in July, first and third in August. I appreciate the notice of work-life balance. We also have to start thinking about, it would be great for the staff is if we could settle in on a location so we didn't have to take up, take down among ESY and extended school year and all the construction. So just think about, most summers, to be honest with you, well, many summers, the meetings were in the morning just because, you know, nights, and that's a big maybe for families and things. So all those things are just different past practices, but as you start making, to make sure that, whether it's Mike, the leadership team, and Michelle has noticed about what kind of schedule you're predicting so they can start planning. One summer, we didn't meet in one of July when I was superintendent. Wasn't a big happening summer and it wasn't, and that was glorious. But so all, just, I wonder, I put this agenda out there to make sure we were all set on the schedule on, because we've got the graduation, you've got the board retreat on the 18th, we've got the meeting on the 15th, which is out of sequence. But also trying to get the board to think about, so you can come back at the next meeting or soon, determine the summer schedule. Is it going to be mornings? Is it gonna be regular? Is it gonna be as needed? Is it gonna be nights?
Yeah.
And then a location for board meetings. So if there's any way to leave some of this stuff set up to relieve pressure on the tech staff, because as Andrea said, there's a lot of work to tech staffs. That's all. That was it.
What areas are used mostly during the summer for the school year program? Like is there, I guess, a better way of putting it, is there an area that would be ideal for us to be able to use? ideal for us to be able to use?
If we could, if we could designate a classroom, you know, like the first, one summer, right, we were in the first classroom as you walked in at MSSS, if we could talk to Amy about design a classroom, because that's lockable, you know, no one's gonna walk off with the stuff. If we could do one classroom, that would be great. Some, you know, in the past, one of, going back history, so before I became Rob, those days, before I became superintendent, all the board meetings were in conferences. And then we had civics, and I actually, as superintendent, moved them here and then classrooms because the conference room didn't work. Summer, though, conference room, you know, it can work because it's usually not tremendously well attended, so. But I think if we could have a fixed classroom, and we've done that before, Room 1, and Matt and I and Amy can look at that, but to secure a classroom for you, set it up, leave it locked in, come in, boom, that would be helpful. Matt, does that make sense to you?
Great.
So just think about it, that was the goal of that.
Super. Good? Yeah, good. All right, so rolling right along, we've got some personnel.
Sure, so one of the, one of the, one of the approaches we took was with our, we, you know, when we nominated, like, we weren't sure what kind of curriculum work was gonna be done, whether we were hybrid, whether we were all out. So we just did an initial contract of work, and then we had Matt keep hours, you know, in the tally, and submitted, and very, very pleased with what Bill and Matt have done. The curriculum council meetings have been very robust, doing a lot of the social justice, cultural responsive work, which has been great. One of the things that Matt and Bill has instituted this year is a review of our core beliefs and values, it's used to be glossary, so every month, we, like this month, we spent about 20 minutes talking about what it means to be competent. And they also coordinated about 37 staff and 14 projects, doing some curriculum work, because remember, we couldn't do it last summer. Is it, why couldn't we do it last summer?
We have a budget.
Last summer. So, so we, that spring, that was coordinated. So it just under $1,200, we revised the contract, and this is still well within what was budgeted, so this wasn't like we used it all up and just, this was monitored and approved by Bill. And so we just, we do a revised contract like we've done, to make sure we're transparent. So it would be a revised contract of $1,200, and I appreciate the work that Bill and Matt have. Then the next, Jim, were you okay? Questions over to you, Norm? The next piece is Tyler Campbell is, has resigned from, he's going back to school, he's over at Harold Martin School Custodian. The end date, right, I think I wrote on the board notes, he's gonna, Michelle's doing some part-time work for us, but the full-time position, it's already been posted, I think, and just
Now, yep, and now it's going outside, because it's going internal first.
But he will, it's not a definitive end of experience, because he's gonna help us out do some part-time, I think right till the end of the school year, it's just something like that, so. But glad that Todd was with us, glad he's heading back to school, and we have a position.
Great, great.
Great.
All right.
Everybody okay? Now we're moving on to 21, 22. Very pleased to bring forward a special education teacher with a behavior focus. Now, why it's titled that way is a behavior specialist is a very specific certification. And so we posted for either as bright, and as special education teacher, behavior focus, which is, this is a special education teacher with lots of experience working in behavior, but does not carry the credential of a behavior specialist, and we try to be transparent in what we're doing. And has the experience working in schools, experience working for one of our consulting firms that we've worked with a long time. And if anybody noticed, it's Mr. Rogers is going to be our behavior person. So very pleased to bring Mr. Rogers on board.
Not be Mr. Rogers, but it's our Mr. Rogers, who'll be just as awesome.
And up next, this is the meeting that we formalized, the ESY Extended School Year Summer Slate. It's great to have Mandy here, if you have any questions. Mandy spends a lot of time staffing, and if she wants to put a plug out, right, Mandy, we need some people.
Staff, yeah, I think people want much dessert first, and I totally get it. We are, we are toward a teacher at Harold Martin, and then some one-on-one IAs, so certainly choose.
Any questions about the ESY slate? And the hope is, and that's one of the things, why I hesitated, Andrew, when you talked about the space, the hope is that we'll be able to use some of the addition at Harold Martin School for ESY, which is really exciting, it's really nice. TPL has given us occupation permit, plans to even without the spray clip, which makes sense, I remember the spray clip, so it's not going worse, so I'm just very excited about that. And the last piece is the Hopkins School District speech that talks to pathologists? I can do this. I'm not sure, and Michelle maybe can help me, we might not have been able to fill this for three years.
Correct.
So this is a covered position by the collective bargaining agreement that we've tried to fill over the last three years, but a speech, this is very rare, I mean, it's a high-demand profession. Very pleased, very pleased to bring Laura Bailey forward as the nominee. Otherwise, it's contracted service, and we do work with the, we work with the HAA, and very transparent with them, but very pleased to bring a nominee forward that, I think, for the first time in three years. Having a salary person, you get significantly more, you know, than a contracted person. We're really excited.
Great. Good. Keep rolling, financial.
The last two, and honestly, the most exciting, the very exciting agenda anyway, but very, very excited to have authorization to sign the last bond application. You know, when, when we were struggling, right, with the budget and whatnot, how we were gonna do, we converted, remember, at one point, Michelle, we were gonna do the whole bond, and then the board voted to stagger the bond, and there was concerns, right, there's obviously risk on interest rate, but there's also risk on whether or not we will have to bridge it, right? If we ran out of funds, and Michelle can speak to it when she gets to the financial, but it does look like, well, no, I think we're assured now, right, Michelle, at this point, that we will not need a bond anticipation, we don't need a bridge loan, which is great. You know, after July 1, Michelle has guaranteed that she texts me once the, I'm always interested in the interest rate. And I think we budgeted it, I don't know, three or four, but it's gonna come in a lot less. So it's exciting times, and we're going to get the loan agreement signed, get it over to the Bond Bank Council, and we'll be all set for the sale mid-July, right? So it's really exciting, and this would complete, this is the last piece of the project, I think, if you, it's about 4.8 million, 9 million, something like that?
Yeah, just under 4.8, yeah.
Just under 4.8 million.
Great.
So you authorized Jim to sign away, so it's good stuff.
Do you have an idea of what the rate will be, based on market conditions? We don't. Okay. It's gotta do with the sector of the individuals that are compiled of the sale to.
Yep.
So the information out there that I hear is, it should be very similar to what we had the last time.
Great.
And it was neat before, right, that they sold it at a 5%, they got a, it was a very strange
Yeah, they sold it at a 5%, you had coupon, and then they gave us a rebate back, and so it was kind of, yeah.
It was very interesting, and someone, yeah, it was just very interesting stuff. So we'll monitor, you'll get a report back, but it's due in a couple weeks, so by authorizing this tonight, we need Dave McKenzie. Laura, our treasurer's gonna sign, and we'll start that Monday, probably, all the signings on.
Great.
Go, thank you.
Last piece, supplemental financial.
And Rob spoke to this in preparation for the finance meeting. Michelle put together an interim financial, that's the same where we're in the fund balance. And the fund balance is one, go ahead, Michelle, you wanna take it?
Yeah, no, no, you're fine, a little, you know, it's 1,012,481.13. And as Rob said, you know, as time goes on, since when I did it, at that snapshot, POs are being closed, and so there'll be another financial for the 15th board meeting.
Can you say that number one more time?
And on the bond, as of the, well, May 24th, to be specific, it was just under $4 million that we spent on the bond, of the $5 million. And so since then, we have made another month's payment for VPS, so it brings us closer to like four, not quite four and a half million dollars, but in essence, probably between now and June 30, we'll probably be around four and a half million, a little bit more. But then we get our money beginning of August, deposit, so we'll be fine.
So, and Michelle would, you know, underbilled this, but this is just natural, but all this work about managing the clients, making sure we're liquid, making sure we have enough on hand means, we didn't have the expense for the bond anticipation note, and we didn't have the work of a bond anticipated note. So both of those things are huge for this office, and Michelle, thank you for your stewardship. Very, very pleased that we're gonna be able to initiate the last bond portion without any of those ancillary work or expenses, and looking forward to a low rate.
I think, I thought it was point 8.0, what we had for the project.
It was low.
Yeah, it was very low.
It's exciting, and
For the last rate?
What we have, 80 cents on the tax rate right now.
Right, I mean
80 cents is right now.
And when we advertised this in March of 2019, the tax impact, we were, the project is significantly big, right, when it did the fourth classroom, it did the fire suppression, we're gonna have the library redesigned here, we're going to have, you know, a whole bunch of, lots of things done, and it's gonna be less than projected tax impact because of the rate. More for less, it's not a bad thing ever.
If this board did not go through with the facilities project, 12%
13
13% increase on this project.
Yeah.
So
A year difference, what Barrett's saying is VPS, is that due to the pandemic, a 13% increase in costs that we missed, because we were actually bidding when work was low, right? So people worried about grabbing any work they could, because they wanted to be busy in that shallow time. So with a 13% less work done.
Yeah. We would not have gotten
So no, we caught some things in a, lightning in a bottle here, so it was good stuff.
Great. All right, I think that's it. So this brings us to our second public comment portion of the evening, so if there's any public comments, if you wanna come up, and just be sure to include your name and address. No? All right. Well, I will close that, and then we are moving on to action items, although before I get there, just to note, our next board meeting is going to be a little out of sequence. Normally, it is on a Thursday as we are here, but that week is super busy, and we have a senior barbecue to be at on the June 17th. So the next board meeting will be on Tuesday, June 15th, in this location, live and in person.
Awesome.
Is it a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
Yep.
Thanks, Matt and I were talking about Wednesday, I thought it was
Oh.
No, it's all good, you're perfect, thank you.
I apologize.
It's a Tuesday.
It is, you're great. Yeah, 'cause we didn't wanna go back-to-back-to-back.
Correct, yeah, that'd be a lot. All right, so, is there anything else, any other, before I get on to action items, any other business, anything else you would like to bring up? And recover?
Will you be at the last board meeting?
Probably.
Okay, so we can, so we can done, say thank you.
Sure.
All right, just wanna make sure that we're giving you enough, all right. So, picture.
Awesome, all right, so moving on to action items. Is there, A, recommendation for the Hopkinen School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to issue a revised contract for macro management, curriculum specialist for the 2020-2021 school year as presented?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, aye. Is there a recommendation for the Hopkinen School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept Harold Martin School Custodian Tyler Campbell's resignation, date determined by the superintendent of schools?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ayes, aye. Is there a recommendation for the Hopkinen School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of Eric Rogers, Mr. Rogers, Hopkinen Middle Height and High School Special Educator, behavior-focused, for the 2021-2022 school year, pending final approval of the superintendent of schools?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, aye. Is there a recommendation for the Hopkinen School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to authorize School Board Chair Jim O'Brien, who's not even here tonight, to sign the loan agreement between the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank and the Hopkinen School District for the July 2021 bond sale?
Good luck, Jim, so moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, aye. Is there, C, a motion for the Hopkinen School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of the 2021 Extended School Year ESY Slate as presented?
So moved, second.
Oh, I have not been asking, are there any comments, any questions? Okay, I'd assume if there were any, you would have spoken up. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ayes, aye. Is there a recommendation for the Hopkinen School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of Laura Bailey, speech pathologist, Hopkinen School District, for the 2021-2022 school year, pending final approval of the superintendent of schools?
So moved, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, aye. And then, prior to this meeting, we did have a special, or a public hearing on the SRT funds that have already been recommended. So, do we have a recommendation for the Hopkinen School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the unanticipated federal funds, SRT, and expend them as presented?
So moved, second.
Any comments? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That's it. We do have a need for a non-public session this evening, so we do need a motion for, to go into non-public, for the discussion of matters as per RSA 91-A colon 3 comma 2, little A for personnel, motion.